Exciting. So much fun, well. It's the best. Sporting that age to all play with. To let you know they all. Well, what's your field? So it's accepted the person taking. I was not put aside.
You're ready at six thirty two.
Technology outset?
Yep, for now.
Brilliant. Okay, I will bring this meeting of the Buckfield Select Board to order at six thirty three. And as we have a forum. We begin with the whole business um to review and finalize the twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five municipal budget recommendations. I will um. Want to make a motion which will, if seconded, allow us to discuss those, so I move that we. Recommend. To add one thousand dollars. To the budget for. Annual maintenance to the two striker units. And that we increase the librarians' wages. By the cost of living increase over the past year.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, let's discuss. If, if I need to leave these, the um. The information I have is that this agreement with our mom Cameron um is. Between four and five hundred dollars for to use annual maintenance. For our strikers team. And given that we have two and to round the number, that's where the thousand dollars came from.
That is correct.
So there's some information. Anybody got thoughts on that?
Yes, well. Maintenance. Package, it's gonna be six thousand dollars, right?
For two.
The four ninety seven is just the service, so if there's any parts, we'll be responsible for those.
So the gamble is, do we think that there will be more than five thousand dollars of. And start the labor.
That's a thing. All for the town, right?
Mm hmm, right, or even one.
Yeah.
So if we spend one thousand versus six thousand. And that's our gamble.
That would cover the annual. Uh maintenance on that town, which is required, so. You know, at least a striker tech is laying his eyes on it, would be able to let us know in advance.
Now, do they have any idea of why? Oh, that's gonna be good for an idea, but you know.
Sometimes they do, yeah, no, it's not always, uh, you know, they're down.
Okay. So anybody have any other questions or comments about the strikers? Okay, so the second part to that motion is to increase the wages for the librarians. By the cost of living increase.
Yes, she was.
Any other questions or concerns? Okay, with that, I will call for a vote. The motion goes to. Add one thousand dollars to the budget for annual maintenance to the striker units and the increase in wage for the librarian. All those in favor?
Azalea, I.
I.
Peter, I.
Sondra, I, and the motion passes, unanimous. That the packet before us. It was the budget updated. With recommendations made at the last meeting. Point of information. Cameron, that. Found it, it was the paper on top. So if we look at this paper here. This may be redundant, but. I'll make the motion that we. Present or ask the town manager to drop the warrant articles. Based on. The budget brought to us after having. Um gone through the budget committee. And including their recommendations, as well as the recommendations of. This board.
I will second.
Discussion, questions, yes?
Oh, I have something in the moment that I overlooked last time.
Okay.
On page three. But text my go, saying that's not included in the budget and even talking about adding it.
No, that was informational.
Add that service. Is there money in this budget? To add that service?
No.
No. Has there been any research done by anyone as to whether or not. The services would be. Beneficial, worth the investment?
Outside of the proposal I presented to you several months ago, I haven't done any more discussions with them. There's several towns in Maine that use it. I haven't reached out to them and talked to them, like, having had time.
Do you have any idea of the amount of time it would take to use? That system to get the information? Out or the amount of time it would take somebody to be the administrator? Of that system?
I sat, I sat through the demo of the, of the program, and this was several months ago now, so I'm trying to remember. The initial setup of getting your groups laid out, like, if you just wanted people with updates for. Emergencies versus town news, because you can set up multiple message groups. Um, once it's all in place, it's just a matter of logging in, typing the message, and hitting send. But um. I don't have a really good answer for you, because. I didn't go too deep into it after we discussed it.
How, how much was the total cost for that? System?
At the time when I had gotten the proposal, the initial cost was fifty five hundred dollars, and then it was thirty five hundred dollars a year after that.
The five thousand five hundred dollars?
That's the first year or?
The first year, then it's thirty five hundred dollars a year after that.
Yeah.
The first contract is two years, so the initial is your fifty five, the second year is thirty five, and then it's your year after that.
And we can cancel. And so after the first year, if we felt that it was not worth the investment, we could cancel.
It's two-year contract.
Two-year contract, so we're committing to.
Two years.
Okay. Awesome. Thoughts, questions about this system?
I don't um. I don't know that much about it, and I don't think we really cast Cameron to look into it so far that we can. Understand it that much at this point, fortunately, that's the.
How? You, you've mentioned that your office often receives calls about the same question items and. Hours and very, you know, kind of basic questions that could be automated through the service. Would you say that it would save your office nine thousand dollars in time over the next two years?
Over the next two years?
Mm hmm.
Yes, and there's a lot of redundant stuff that we, what are your hours? When is the dump open? Um. If we had community events going, or actually, the most recent right now is baseball softball registration. When does it close? You know what I mean? It's, we take that call five, six times a day. What's the website to register? You know, those little things you can program it. So that they can text those questions and it'll spit out the response that we've set up for it to send it on. So there is a lot of. Yep, as well as, what's the Zoom link? Which has been the same for two years.
So. Am I correct that information? People who want to participate in the service can choose to have automated messages come to them either. On computer, email, or through phone text?
It's all phone text, um, so they would, in order to opt in, there would be a widget, it would be added to our website, which would explain it, so it would say, if you want to join the Buckfield. Whatever you want to call it, community update group or whatever, it would say text. Yes to whatever the number is, it would send an automated message doc saying that they were signed up and telling them that if they want to stop, they text back stop. It's a lot similar to, I mean, you guys have probably joined services like that.
And this should. This. Could or would also be used if there was any kind of emergency event. Or perhaps the emergency management team. Could have access to putting in information so people could have up to date.
Correct, so like if Roundabout Road is washed out, like, everybody that signed up for the service. They could send out a message that says Roundabout Road's closed from this intersection to this intersection, do a washout, please avoid, or whatever, you know what I mean, instead of. Posting it online and hoping people see it. The people that have signed up that want that information will receive that in real time.
It seems to me that. There's a certain amount of value.
Mm hmm.
In that being able to get emergency information out. To people all at the same time.
Yeah.
And it being accurate. Yes, question.
Do you, with, with decisions, with the precautions, would we have to have a specific type of phone for this work? To work across all carriers?
As long as your phone can accept text messages.
Doesn't matter what company you have.
Yeah.
There's, it could be a flip phone, it can be, and is it, do you get a fee charged to your phone or anything?
Most, oh, sorry.
Um. As I understand it, it would be based on the service. That you have, if you are billed for every text that you receive. Then there may be a fee, but it wouldn't be any different than any other text that you would get. And then the last question I would have is, who, who would be in charge or have the authority to send those texts out? I would imagine that the town manager would have that authority and um. It ultimately would be a select board decision who has access to send that information out, but. I believe that the board would take recommendation, okay, from the town managers to who would have access to that.
Regarding the phone plans needed for it, a lot of cell phone plans through like Verizon or US Cellular already come with unlimited talk and text, it's just your data that is limited. Um, but if you have something like a track phone or like a Walmart phone where you need to get a card for it, that. So, someone will allow unlimited talk and text, but a lot, it's more common that it's text by text charge for the cards, but.
With no further discussion, I'd like to amend my motion. By, oh, oh, yes.
In order to amend your motion, she would have to rescind.
I will rescind my second.
I think I can amend the motion, and then that person would have to amend their second, but either way. Okay. Um. So to amend to include the line. Also adding five thousand five hundred dollars. To, do I need to say this specifically? To the budget. To cover the. Cost. Well, what's the name of the program?
Text my go.
So. Two, five, oh, four, five, one, oh, what's the specific name of the program?
Text.
Text my go.
Text my go. Also, okay. Okay. Any further discussion? All right, I'll call for a vote.
A wake-up question.
Oh, I'm sorry, Judy, I didn't see you, yes.
I, I'm sorry, but I'd like to know, since you're proposing this budget, what is the total budget and how will the mill rate compare with this year's mill rate?
Okay, so what I can tell you. Good question. If we were to include. This amount of five thousand five hundred dollars. Let me do a little bit of math here. When we take the expenses proposed in this year's budget. And we subtract the revenues. And then we also subtract the fund balance appropriation, which we haven't gotten to yet, but what was recommended by the town manager was three hundred thousand dollars. That. We would need to raise and appropriate. Four hundred seventy-three dollars and seventy-five cents less than we needed to raise and appropriate last year.
Municipal.
From uni, for the municipal budget.
And um.
I, I can't address what the impact will be for this, based on the school and the um. County budgets. But the municipal budget. Should not impact, negatively impact anybody's taxes, because the amount needed. Will be slightly less than last year.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Point of information.
Mm hmm.
Um. Did the numbers on this page include a thousand dollars for striker and attack? The, the striker money and the librarian money?
That she'd included everything you voted on, plus what you just voted on tonight, except for that fifty five hundred dollars.
So. Thank you, I'll make one search. Any other questions? I apologize, Judy, that I missed your hand before.
May, may I ask another thing? Do, do we know what the school budget is? Is that going up?
We anticipate that the school budget will go up. It's not finalized yet, they're continuing to work on it. Um, I would encourage anybody with any thoughts or concerns to contact school board.
Current projections are eleven point five.
The current projections are an increase of eleven point five to the school budget, is that correct?
That is correct.
So the current projection is eleven point five percent increase to the school budget. Put that on here, Cameron, last year versus.
Yeah, if you go to. The special assessments. Which is page twenty-three. If you look at the twenty twenty-four budget, that's this year, if you look at the twenty twenty-five, under the elected column, I put the current. The last information I heard and what we were looking at, that eleven point five, that's what that one, nine, two, three, three, nine, one is.
So from the. One million seven hundred twenty-five to the one million nine hundred twenty-three, is that correct?
Yep.
So the projected. Increase, could you do the math? For me while I read this out loud for Judy. Um, last year, the school budget was one million seven hundred twenty-five thousand thirteen dollars fifty-seven cents. Be projected, and they're not done with it yet, correct?
Well, they're still working on cuts.
They're still working on it, but the projected at this time is one million nine hundred twenty-three thousand three hundred ninety-one dollars, which is an increase of.
One hundred ninety-eight thousand dollars.
One hundred ninety-eight thousand dollars.
Yeah.
Well. Yeah, may I say something?
Please.
That, that is more than a mil, and, and I just might like to point out to the board that. Um, our town valuations have not come in yet, but if they go up. Compared to the valuations in Rumford or Mexico. We may see an even higher rate next year, because the school budget is based on seventy-five percent valuation, fifth, um, twenty-five percent student body. Just, please keep that in mind.
The state valuations have come in, I believe, so this, it's based on the state valuation?
This is based off the twenty twenty-four state valuation, and, and that's what the school uses, that seventy-five percent of that.
So I'm learning now, Judy, um, that the formula is based on the state valuation.
Okay.
And that the twenty twenty-four state valuation is in.
Okay, thank you.
No, thank you. Perhaps also point of information. As I. Learn more about. This formula. For paying for schools, um, I think it will behoove all of us once. This goes through to better understand what that formula is, perhaps what the problems are, and to reach out to people in our state. Who have the power to perhaps change this. Uh, I was not aware of what I feel may be some real inequities. So I believe I had called for a vote, and then we took a question. Any other questions? Or continue with the vote?
Azalea, I.
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 Sure.
Sondra, I. The motion passes. And we have a budget to bring to the community. And also, Cameron, thank you very much. I have the final. Does it pertain to that motion? Um, no, are you still? No, we, we just voted to accept it.
The entire thing.
We have, we finished it. It will, it will go to public.
I don't know where to place this.
Can I?
Maybe wait till other business?
Well, it has to do with the budget and uh reserve funds and that. Um, money that was added for the training. I think it was two hundred and forty thousand.
So perhaps other business, because we're past. I understand.
We're not going to do anything that will impact.
Ah, can we talk about it in other business?
I know, that's the third time you said it, but it has to do with the warrant articles, so if you want to wait, I'll wait till other business to discuss the warrant art.
Fantastic, thank you.
Thank you.
Um. Moving on to community resilience project update, final decision. This is the. Grants for the building. I don't know how to make this motion. I make a motion that we. Determine. The community resilience project timeline. So we discuss it, please.
Sorry about that.
Okay, thank you. Um, discussion about the community resilience project, and I would say, well, you.
Um, yeah, so I had reached out to Zach Goslin with Abcog, um. And to ask him about the repairs that we wanted to focus on for the building, namely, if we focused on this one municipal meeting room, if that would um restrict us from applying. For the same grant for further repairs to the municipal building, um, and then actually what qualifies as uh. Something we could put under this grant. He did say that we could uh phrase it um in phases, so this municipal room would be phase one, and then moving to our next. Pro, project area in different phases, um. And then another concern was if we could do windows, and uh Zach got back to me and said that. Windows absolutely qualify as long as we are updating the existing windows with windows that uh meet efficiency main standards. Um, and are approved by efficiency main, so that's what I have.
Um, so we did get that information.
Mm hmm.
And um. I have reached out to a couple contractors trying to get the information on who, because we are limited to who we can have give us these estimates.
Yeah.
Um. Because we don't need a quote. That we can just be given an estimate, I think that we could. Probably get that in a more timely fashion. We do not have that information right now. When is this?
Twenty ninth.
Back mid-third.
The grants due on the twenty ninth, so ideally, we would.
Of March?
Uh, yes. So Zach, we need some time to put that together.
This week, tomorrow. So. We need to go or somebody. To bring them here in their office.
Yeah.
If we can. Get that estimate information by Friday. And be fulfilling the hope of Zach.
If I get it.
Think we can make that happen?
Yeah, if I get it Friday, I can get it to Zach, and he'll have next week, basically.
So if we set that. Timeline as. Doing whatever we do to get that estimate by Friday. Um, get that information to you. That would be. An acceptable timeline, we hope.
It's the best we can do at this point.
Right now. So the motion was to. Discuss and set a timeline.
Mm hmm.
Um. Do I need to? Amend the motion by saying the timeline? All in favor of studying timeline?
Azalea, I.
Aye.
Sandra, aye? Our line set. Next item in old business, emergency management updating or review? My turn to the expert in the room?
Uh, yes, I can. Three, four and a half. There's probably different things, um. Karen and I went back and forth with FEMA, a couple of times, and we thought we had a second date for the public assistance program manager. Exploratory call. Um. And then, excuse me, would you repeat that again? I'm trying to wrap my head around what that is. Yeah.
Me too.
You know, we have. For FEMA public assistance. Grant. Basically reimbursement for the storm damage in December of twenty twenty-three. We had gone to the briefings, we got into the portal. We knew this was coming, we just didn't know when it happened this week. Where FEMA's program disaster manager. Uh, emailed us. And said, can you read, can we do this exploratory call? This is the first part of. Phase two. Uh, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday. So we're all coordinated, we picked Thursday at ten o'clock. We thought we were set. FEMA had the kids. But we are rescheduled now for this Friday at ten o'clock. And at that meeting. We're gonna do a brief. I'm sorry, at that, on that exploratory call. We will do a brief overview of our storm damages. And coordinate. The recovery scoping meeting. Okay, and and it's at. When whatever day that turns out to be, that will be about an hour and a half meeting, and FEMA will literally, the program disaster. Manager and whoever else FEMA thinks needs to be here. Will arrive and fulfill that whatever the set time is and will have the meeting and we have to have. You know, a certain amount of documentation and. Damage reports to give to. Even though we had filed previously under the initial damage assessment. Reporting. Phase, this is phase two, more specific. More review, so we'll have to coordinate probably with the town manager, with public works and myself and. And my question to you is. Do you want to be notified when that meeting is in the event you want to attend the recovery scoping meeting? Cause you're the ward and you're. You know, obviously, you're the officials. Making final decisions and things, so.
Yeah. Okay, I'm seeing head nodding, so I should really speak for. And I probably all of us that we would like to know, I may have missed it in what you said.
I'll take.
When do you anticipate that meeting happening, like one month, two months?
I know, I believe it would probably be within ten to fourteen days after this phone call on Friday morning at ten.
Okay, so naturally within the next two weeks.
I believe so, okay. That's my best guess. I've guessed before and wrong. However, once we have that meeting. We will only have sixty days. To have it completely, whatever work they require of us. So on and so forth. We will have a sixty day, we know it will work off. So I will contact everybody. And. You show up, you know, as soon as I know the date for the recovery. Scoping meeting, I will. And so on and on. And. Uh, well, then. Makes sense?
Mm-hmm.
And other questions about that?
Is there anything you need from us before this Friday's meeting or before the? Meeting following that?
I think between Cameron and I, we. Have enough general information to be able to. You know, give a quick overview, because they think the phone call should spend fifteen minutes.
Okay.
Um, and I did talk with someone from FEMA, changed emergency management. Uh, Naomi, I'm forgetting her last name, but she. Works the state side of public assistance. Um, through FEMA, cause the money will actually go from FEMA state to us. Um, and so she walked. Through the process again. To their help. Um, and gave me a direct phone number to call if we had problems once we enter. That sixty day window. And I suppose between now and then, I thought that was. You know. Good. Yes. Uh. So, okay, so all running, okay, so I got that. Um. I had mentioned in my report, uh, last month's report about. Tabletop exercises, which. For short is T T X. Uh, a- exercises. And after talking with um. The revenue chief Stacy.
Mm-hmm.
And getting her input, um. As I said in there, it was uh mid-July to August. And I need you, I need some feedback from the board. Um. I know it seems a little premature to be talking about doing this uh tabletop exercise. I believe. The updated emergency management plan will be done by then. I could be wrong. But even if it's not done, um, Bill. Jeff, uh.
Guy Gieden?
Gieden. Uh, from the state, NEMA. We don't have to have. A completed, perfect plan in order to hold a table top after God's shaken his head, he knows. Um, in fact. It's okay, and communication is often, he's like one of those things that. Gets discussed heavily during a tabletop exercise. So maybe by then, even by mid-July or August. That text got above it would even be part of the plan. You know, it might be added in there, but as you mentioned, and so on and so forth, so. I I want to know. None, you know, trying to. Coordinate everybody's schedule is gonna be really tough. And. Coordinating with. What's available, what I'm gonna shoot for. Mid-July to August. We're past some major holidays and graduations and all that, and it's. The best time for the rescue chief. Um. So feedback. Yeses, no's, go for it, don't go for it, too much going on, not enough going on.
We act here at the shop.
Yeah. Yeah, and even if we aren't able to coordinate everyone, it's still, it's a worthwhile pursuit, I think, to have at least most of us.
Okay, and one of the things we could consider, if there's two or three that can't make it, is we could use the recorder and record it. So whoever misses it could then review the. Okay, I will reach out to him. Um, work, you guys continue on your emergency operating position? Not in the, it's not gonna come in the format that you think it's gonna come in, put that way. Um, I made. Personal call, I made an executive decision based on my own personal experience. Through that whole other process of working with two or three different people. Um, and plus, the template that we were using to match to our. Current plan was dated two thousand and seven. I've sensed then. Research through FEMA, so on and so forth, and. I have way better updated information to work with to create plans. So we are creating the plan and word document. There'll be lots of similarities. But some new stuff. And I cannot sit here tonight and tell you exactly what format it might be. It might come in a Word. P F. A crossword.
Yeah. You're close.
And you may or may not be able to put comments in the column, you might have to actually type them in, but you'll get something, I believe, before your next meeting. With the email, okay, that, any other question? Um.
Thank you so, so much. Important work.
Yeah, thank you. Okay, good.
Next item in old business, building permit fee schedule. I will admit, I don't have it in front of me.
Yeah, I gave him to you last meeting, hold on.
Uh, Cameron, I'm. Support is down, I always root for you, I always leave the binder at R.
I read them.
Was there a a sheet that had suggested changes? With the, um.
I missed out on.
Yes.
So he he had handed out the sheet with the old grades on it.
Mm-hmm.
But hadn't typed in, it was just a verbal.
So there wasn't actually, there wasn't actually a piece of paper that had the suggested?
No, he gives that five dollars plus ten cents of square foot, which I don't believe that says.
Yes, I just want to make sure there wasn't another piece of paper that I managed misplace.
You're sharing?
Cameron, would you please refresh my memory? You had said something about. Five cent per square foot?
So what I've seen from other towns and the ones that I've looked up is they they charge a base, a base rate. So your base rate would be like five dollars.
Mm-hmm.
So that's your minimum. And then. Some towns, bigger towns, will charge like twenty-five cents a square foot. I don't think we need, I wouldn't recommend charging twenty-five cents a square foot. But I think it's reasonable to consider five cents a square foot. And base the cost of the building permit on the actual size of the structure as opposed to saying somebody who builds a. What?
Okay, here, pause for a second. I'd like to make a motion, like, see to that information, basically. I knew you said it last time, I couldn't remember what it was. I would like to make a motion that we amend. The building permit application fees. To reflect a. Flat fee and then a five cent per square foot. Addition to that fee.
I will second that.
Okay, let's discuss. If there are no other immediate questions, perhaps. Thank you, I'm sorry if it felt like I was cutting you off before, please, put more of your information, because it's valuable.
So again, we, you know, we we basically have a permit fee structure right now that it's just. Up to, I mean, you get a big scope of zero to two hundred, two hundred and one to five hundred. Um, and it's a flat rate for that, whereas other towns break it down into. I'm looking for input. New, new, new construction, for example, has a base rate and certain square footage, accessory structures, so sheds. What do we call them? The shelter logic, the, no, the Quanza huts or whatever, you know, they've got. A different, lower tiered one, but essentially you could simplify it and just charge a base, or you could break it down by structure, but. Um, I mean, if you take that two hundred square foot structure with a five dollar base and multiply it by. Five cents a square foot, I think it increases the permit fee to twenty dollars.
Which five hundred will be thirty.
There you go.
Yeah, I mean.
You're paying for the square footage as opposed to. And ours is capped early at two thousand, there's no. What? What do we do above that?
Mm-hmm.
Something gets a really good deal.
But we're also trying to do this to. Make the penalties a little more. Uniform to. Yeah, so someone. Who didn't get a building permit, they taught them, so I'm gonna get. Completely shamed.
We're gonna get the same fine as the four thousand square foot home, the.
Right, so your, your, your penalties would be based off of what you built, not necessarily. Just a flag. I mean, if you built a house, that's, it should be a bigger penalty than if you. Didn't take out a building permit for a chicken coop. Cause you're a nod in your head. See, this is Sabatus, I I just pulled this one up. They charge, they don't have a base, they just charge per square foot. Pools have the same, they're gonna flat rate, but. For the most part. They set a rate. Which theirs is obviously higher than what I had proposed to you. Penalty for obtaining a permit after construction is a minimum of a hundred dollars. This is interesting, you had brought up the, when we were discussing the. The penalty for not taking it out, and other towns are doing. Similar.
So, this one suggests fifty percent of the permit fee?
Uh, this says penalty for starting work without a permit is triple the permit fee.
Says a. Fifty percent whichever. Wait, one hundred dollars or fifty percent is the greater?
That's penalty for obtaining permit after construction is already started without inducement by a municipal official. So basically, if you come in before the code enforcement comes and says, hey, you need a building permit. It's. A minimum of a hundred dollars. Or fifty percent, whichever is the greater of the two. It'd be helpful if more towns put this information up so I could actually compare, but a lot of them don't. Turner, I don't, I couldn't find anything on Turner's.
This is clearly written, the piece that. I'm not super comfortable with is it says, or fifty percent whichever. One hundred dollars or fifty percent whichever is the greater of the two. Um, for something. Like a chicken coop.
Hmm.
For somebody that doesn't realize that they need to, and then their neighbor, their good neighbor says, hey, go get that permit. I don't. I would not want them to be fined one hundred dollars. For that.
And this is also a town with triple the population of ours, so I'm sure, I'm sure some degree of that rule is to, you know. Prevent that from happening, but I don't, I don't see that as something we would need to do here.
But you didn't make a recommendation for a minimum in the ordinance anyway, so that's, that's irrelevant. Because you had already, it's just the ten times whatever the permit fee was after code enforcement's notified. So according to the ordinance that is gonna go before the voters, hypothetically, if you come in and get a building permit before you're notified, then there's no penalty.
And to be clear. This would go into effect once approved. By the voters, and if somebody had. Built a chicken coop last year. The fines would not. Apply to, it would not be retroactive.
The new ordinance wouldn't take effect until approved by the voters, correct?
But once it's taken, if it were to be approved by the voters.
It's effective as of the date, so yes, it's July one, or whenever we have a meeting, uh, June eleventh. Forward. That doesn't mean, I mean, most of that stuff's gonna be picked up in the rebel anyways, and there's not gonna be any penalties, but moving forward that. That doesn't mean, I mean, most of that stuff's gonna be picked up in the rebel anyways, and there's not gonna be any penalties, but moving forward, that, that would be the standard, not going backwards.
So if somebody built a chicken coop last year and did not know that they needed a building permit this would not apply to them, because anything they did took place before the ordinance was passed. So we'd be starting clean slate. That's what I am assuming, I just wanted to make sure. So at five cents a square foot something two hundred square feet nice chicken coop, right? That would be
Chicken chateau.
That would be ten dollars.
If you went with the base, if you just do what they're doing and just went with the per square foot cost, it would be ten bucks, yes.
Yes. Am I wrong in thinking that I've had a dog and used the registered big dog tags and missed doing new dog tags by the seventh Thursday I would be paying the dog tag and twenty-five dollar fine per fee, is that true? I think it is, it's a late fee. There, there is a late fee, and it's a twenty-five dollar late fee. That, that sounds correct, I know.
Municipalities have discretion of waiving that fee.
So it could be waived, but it's been set. Okay, so I'm just saying, I think it's okay to have a base as well as the square footage, that shifts my opinion when I think about dogs. What do we charge to register a dog?
Whatever the state requires, six dollars for, for, what do they call them, altered.
Okay.
Eleven dollars for an unaltered.
Do people feel that fifteen dollars is a lot for a Quonset hut or a chicken coop, or do people feel that's about?
I always guess and they're a bigger population than we are. Doesn't they, they're way bigger than us, yeah.
Oh, that's Canton, Massachusetts, I don't want that. They're a little bit bigger, but
You look at it, fifteen dollars for a pit is something that, you know, ultimately you gotta pay down, and it's like, I haven't got into your house.
And you may have only paid So, if, what if we set, like said, below two hundred square feet, it's the five dollar fee.
Why don't you say?
Start adding five cents per square foot, anything above like what would be the square footage?
Just populated.
So
So perhaps anything over, you know, two hundred and fifty square feet, it's then an additional five cents per square foot.
The other thing, and I'm seeing this consistently with different towns, is they set a different rate for residential construction versus auxiliary building, or, yes, an auxiliary, no, accessory and auxiliary are two different words, an auxiliary building, so a shed, a chicken coop, a Quonset hut. They have got a lower rate than building a house. I believe this is Mechanic Falls, yes, it says Mechanic Falls. So, new residential construction for Mechanic Falls is twenty-five cents per square foot. But it looks like it says per floor, so if it's two floors, they double that. Access structures, I'm assuming they're saying accessory structures. They charge fifteen cents per square foot, I mean, where we're setting it at five, I don't know if that's necessary, but I'm seeing that consistently amongst
I'm thinking that we want a fee structure that overall will cover the costs of processing the paperwork and having people, the code enforcement and people to go out and assess. It, some of those fees, that's a lot of money. More than we would need to recoup the costs, cause I'm not seeing beneath.
So, what I'm, if I, if you don't mind, the code enforcement officer, anytime a building permit is pulled, the code enforcement officer has to review it. At twenty-two dollars an hour. Whether he comes out here or not. Fifteen minutes of that, we at least need to recoup at least fifteen minutes, now if this is a residential you know, it's, it's a bigger structure and he needs to visit, now we're paying mileage and we're paying his wage, so just take that into consideration when you're doing this, we're not trying to make money, but we also wanna help the taxpayers substitute, you know covering the cost of code enforcement, that was the, that was the thought process in the marijuana ordinance, and the fee schedule for that was to make sure that we were covering his costs, so that it wasn't costing the taxpayers money, and I think that's the purpose of of the fees, and since this hasn't been reviewed in since I was in high school.
So perhaps starting with that let's say seven dollars, I think so a little bit of room for growth at that twenty-two dollars an hour. So if that flat permit fee at seven or something near there, and then any structure above two hundred and fifty square feet is an additional five cents a square foot. You send out a few of those, would that cover the cost? Yes. Two things I'm thinking, we use the MMA survey on wages, is there an MMA survey on on building codes, and should be hit the fiftieth percentile? And or the other thing I remember was using like, the interest, I've been here for twenty-six years and those credits haven't changed, so think of what that money would worth twenty-six years ago, and due to cost of living increase to twenty twenty? Use those formulas maybe. I, I hear what you're saying, and I think we would need to decide do we want this to generate revenue? Do we want to bring in more money that it will cost us to process these permits, or do we want to keep these figures as low as we can? I think because there's two different, I'll just do that on sugar. Well, the thing that keeping it affordable and reasonable is the goal, because that helps everybody in town. But I think when the town uses money, whether it's the code enforcement officer or the clerks that have to file pay, it's not just the code enforcement officer, we're paying, I think you put in the budget up to four thousand dollars for an assessor. So they're paying work that goes to the assessor too, so take a twenty-two dollars or whatever it is an hour for code enforcement officer, add it to the assessor, and then add it to the wear and tear of everything else, I think you'd be around that fifty percent. So even though you're looking at a town that may have a greater population, the expense is still the same. You know, if you look at their, whatever town that was, what are they paying their code enforcement officer, what are they paying their assessor, what are they paying their company?
Yep.
That's, so it's not that we're trying to make money, I don't wanna apply that at all, but we at least in the minimum, we have to, we need it.
Yep, yes, yes.
I agree. Thank you, you know. Do the same thing?
Then see what happens, right, I mean, you know, they're only paying
But maybe we need to differentiate the type of structure. I, I just really stuck on that, we want people to come get a building permit
Yeah.
for the chicken coop, for the above ground pool, for the
Bristol, where's Bristol on this list?
Lean to shed, the teepee in the backyard, if, if we're asking people to do that, to make that.
There you go, there's Bristol main.
As affordable as possible.
That's, they've got a population of twenty-eight hundred, but this gives you an idea, commercial, industrial, heated space, twenty-five cents a square foot. Residential's fifteen cents a square foot, accessory structures are ten cents per square foot, but there's a minimum fee of fifty dollars. Now, they charge less for driveways, we charge fifty dollars, they charge twenty-five. But they also set a flat rate for swimming pools, it's like
It works like most towns differentiate between structures.
Correct, they have accessory structures, and then they have, um
Now is there a way to look into their information, do they expect people to get a building permit for a chicken coop or a
I'd have to look at their Temporary agricultural structure, permit is not required for one floor detached accessory structures, provided the floor area does not exceed two hundred square feet. Does that answer your question? They do charge temporary agricultural structure, so that's a side note, but they do have a five cent per square foot on so if you put up a three hundred square foot shelter logic and used it as a temporary agricultural structure, you would have to pay five cents per square foot.
But if you put up a two hundred square foot shelter logic in the summer, what is that one?
Nothing, cause it says it's a, it's, it's not required for a one floor detached accessory structure. So that'd be chicken coops, that'd be sheds that were less than two hundred square feet. You'd have to revise your building permit ordinance to include that. Which would just be one sentence, I mean, you're just
We're already taking a building permit ordinance to the voters.
You just wanna make sure that before you get to your public hearing that you've got it. The one square feet is pretty big.
Yeah, like I said, that, that's a planning home.
Yeah.
You, Conex boxes, right? A ten by twenty Conex box wouldn't require a building permit.
It has a floor.
It's as, as long as floor area does not exceed two hundred square feet.
Oh, okay. So what's your average Conex box?
Well, they get the short twenty footers, and then I think they got forty footers. They, they're wider than eight feet, they gotta be. Roots twelve feet wide on both things. I don't know how big it is, I'm just making this stuff up.
You got a big Conex box, property, almost always eight feet, eight feet dollars plus five cents a square foot.
We're still on the Conex box thing, I was trying to figure out how many square feet you got, twenty foot Conex box was. What did you say, Sandler, I'm sorry, I missed it when you said it.
I think I can do this, I'd like to move, we postpone this matter until we set the dates for the public hearings. And that way, we could come back and discuss it knowing what we have for time. As to how we're going to proceed with this.
I'm second that.
Okay. So the motion on the table right now is to postpone motion on the fee schedule until we set the dates for the public hearings, all in favor?
I say aye.
So pushing the pod.
And I wouldn't mind collecting some more information from comparable towns. Yeah.
So when we get after we pass number two of new business we'll come back to this and figure what we can. So that concludes old business, moving on to new business. Um, we have the consent agenda, yes?
I will make a motion that we accept the consent agenda.
Questions or discussion? All in favor of accepting that consent agenda is written?
I say aye.
Passes the levels of numbers. New business number two, to set public hearing dates. The first is for shoreline zoning ordinance. Something we weren't invited to. Do you wanna go check them out?
Really noisy, I think they've had it all set.
So collectively, we have two public hearing, two ordinances for which we need to schedule public hearings, and two two public hearings for the budget. And what is your desired timeline? I need to do a motion before we discuss this. So I move that we set dates for the public hearings listed on the agenda.
I second.
Discussion, all in favor? So when, what was our due date?
Are we unable to combine these?
I think we
At least the ordinances?
I agree, same.
Schedule one public hearing for shoreline zoning with the building permit to immediately follow, so it's two separate public hearings all in the same night.
In your experience, but and I know it could go, who knows? But roughly what should we budget for time for two tournaments, public hearings?
It could be five minutes, it could be an hour, that's why I said you, whatever you do second, I would recommend that you schedule it immediately to follow the public hearing on the shoreline zoning ordinance, and that's how we'll publish it. And then have to shut it off if people are talking.
Yeah. So, you know, point taken, but I'm thinking perhaps shoreline zoning ordinance public hearing immediately followed by the first public hearing for the budget. And then have a second meeting uh, second date set a time for the building permit ordinance meeting.
It's a lot more expensive. I have to post these in the newspaper, so I'm gonna have to post, if you do it the way I just recommended, it could be one posting. Cause it would all be included if I'm, I mean, I guess I could do it the other way, but there's a lot more words, cause I changed dates.
We're gonna need to change two of these settings.
No, I'm saying if if you schedule shoreline on one day and building permit on another day, I'm not utilizing the same date, so I have to the the posting, if I do it all at once together, would have to be much longer.
I I was just thinking to it, if we, because we have to have two meetings on the budget. So we have these two meetings for the budget and we put one ordinance meeting with this budget meeting and one ordinance meeting with this budget meeting, so now we have two days with meetings. Rather than two ordinance meetings together, budget meetings, budget meetings, so that's three meetings.
I see what you're saying, and I.
And if we do it on two days on the earlier side, if for whatever reason, things go really long and we don't get to it, we could leave ourselves an extra week to schedule another meeting.
Hmm. So one set of meetings would be shoreline and town meeting. Another set of meetings would be building permit and town meeting, and then the third would be a shoreline and building.
Now, first meeting. So the town meeting warrant.
Hmm.
That's suddenly what is that meeting comprised of?
You go line by line, every warrant.
It's a law.
Yeah, you read it, any questions? Any concerns?
So that's separate from the public hearings.
No, that's, maybe I misunderstood your question.
Those are the public hearings, but we go.
So C is two public hearings, all town meeting warrant.
Hmm.
Correct.
So we have A, B and two Cs, we need to have two Cs.
Okay.
Correct?
You don't have to have two Cs, we don't.
But we're we.
Gotcha.
Thank you, Lucy.
For some reason, I uprooted two on the shoreline building.
The only thing, and this is a, we can what if all day long, but what if somebody doesn't wanna come, they're not interested in the shoreline zoning one, but they wanna come to the building permit, I mean, the uh the budget meeting, and then the shoreline zoning takes an hour and a half, so now they're gonna sit here for an hour and a half and listen to the shoreline zoning thing, and all they wanna do is participate in the building permit.
Let us know that and we plan to a fifteen minute recess in between, and when that first meeting ends, I'll call the meeting, tell them we're done, come on down. Like, I have respect for people's times or types.
Just fine.
Hmm. I'm just thinking for the town meeting warrant, not that this is will necessarily impact our ability to address the shoreline and the building permit, but I just want to clarify, we wanna do one on like a weekday and then one on like a weekend night, right?
I think that's been the fastest practice.
Yeah.
Deal with us for people, I'd answer it.
Okay, just patient.
If that's open for discussion too, it's okay.
No, I absolutely agree.
Timeline that you have, I was gonna recommend that you do the public hearings for your warrant on the second, which is also a select board meeting night, so you would have had a public hearing and then your select board meeting, and then that Saturday, because the deadline of the twelfth is really pushing it, and I was really trying to give us a little couple more extra days, but.
So you said April, what's the Saturday?
Saturday the sixth. I need at a minimum ten days to post.
So if we.
And I have to get the warrant written before, and you have to approve it, well, that's, how's that gonna work? No, cause you're not approving the warrant until after you hear what they say, so you're gonna have my draft warrant.
So you would like, it would work out best for you for to have the first meeting about the budget, town meeting about the budget to be April second. Is what you're saying?
Today, nineteen, one, two, three, four, seven, eight, nine, ten. You could do the first one on the thirtieth, well, I'd have to post today, and I have I'm not gonna, I don't, I still have to type, I still have to write the warrant, so I need at least this week to write the warrant. So.
So if we held a public hearing for the shoreline zoning ordinance on April second with a public hearing for the town meeting warrant to directly follow with a fifteen minute or in between, probably don't need to list that directly to follow.
Hmm.
So basically, we do an A and C on the second.
Hmm.
And then April sixth a build, a public hearing for the building permit ordinance with a second town meeting public hearing for the town meeting warrant directly to follow.
And we'd be rescheduling the regular select board meeting to the ninth or?
Well, you're either gonna have to move the second to the ninth so that you can approve the warrant after your public hearings, or you're gonna have to schedule a select board meeting immediately following the second public hearing to vote on it, because like, we can't send it to elections and load it into the system and print off ballots until you have approved the warrant.
So the sixth is a Saturday?
Yes.
So then we could schedule our next select board meeting to directly follow the public hearing for the town meeting warrant on the sixth. So you have three, a public hearing, a public hearing, a select board meeting.
Hmm.
You certainly don't need to list it in the paper, but we can put it out there, but if there's anyone who does not want to attend the first meeting, the first public hearing will then attend the second public hearing. They can reach out and we, I I get it, if somebody just wanna come sit for an hour and a half. But then I guess what they could do is put it, turn on Zoom and
Yep.
keep doing what they're doing and.
Yeah.
So that would work.
So the building permit ordinance and the town meeting warrant on April sixth with the select board meeting to follow?
Yes. What time works best for the community, do you think?
Six thirty gives everybody, well, there's two here.
So I'll start on, on April second, which is a weekday.
Okay.
Best time for the community.
Typically hold those at six o'clock.
Start at six.
It allows people to get out of work and.
Hmm.
So shoreline zoning at six. We'll take a recess and public hearing for town meeting warrant directly follow.
Hmm.
Sorry, I'm just counting days.
No, no, please count and double count, check, count what we need to do. So what time it works for you?
Hmm.
Okay, and that was the day we already had scheduled.
Right.
And then on April sixth on Saturday, again, what would work best for the, which is typically in favor by the community?
Usually do it in the morning, I can't be here in the morning, I softball with the girls, so.
That's okay.
If you schedule it early in the morning, I won't be here.
How do you define early?
Well, we're we're playing softball at eight in the morning, so that's early for me.
Okay.
Uh, I, if it was eleven thirty, I could do eleven thirty. Uh. I didn't think of holidays, what are all the holidays, are there any?
Tax day on the fifteenth. Easter Monday on the first.
Easter's in March, yeah. That's weird.
Twelve forty, yeah, yeah, I want to do it all in March, I guess, it's a good people time, so, yeah, do whatever.
I I would be scheduled to work until four, but I still have a quorum without me. This will be the second public hearing.
Yeah.
Right, so are you comfortable without them?
Hmm.
Are you comfortable without?
I'm comfortable with that, and I can probably like tune in on my AirPods or something, just over Zoom, but no promises on responsiveness.
Blackboard being convenient and following.
Okay.
And the afternoons, June versus Saturday.
So we're Sundays as well.
Oh, okay, so that doesn't work, yeah. And then are we having a select board meeting for April ninth? To approve it?
No, the the select board meeting at the day I have six covers that, no, you're good. I've thought the same thing as well, but I caught myself.
But that also does allow for us, if for whatever reason, we needed to recess the meeting and continue to discuss, we could then recess until Tuesday. The night.
Hmm.
Let's hope we don't have to, but but worst case then.
Well, it gives it gives Brittany five extra days.
But that fills in now. You know, in case we get a ten foot snowstorm.
Hmm. Don't speak those words.
Yeah, but because that's me. If for some reason, something happens it's been known to snow in April.
Hmm.
And we need to reschedule public hearing, what do we need to do? Can, do we need to then go out another seven days, or can we set a storm date in the posting?
I'd take the chance. We
Okay, um.
We can run this whole public hearing on Zoom, they can access it via the internet or on their phone. And I didn't get snow days in the military, I'm sorry. You can all curse me if we're all driving here in the snow on Saturday, but I just. I don't think you want, I live on top of the mountain.
So what was the start time on, yeah, twelve thirty on the sixth? Thirty.
Turn around, you know, yeah.
Who wants to draw straws and who's gonna read the warrant word for word? Bob usually does it every year.
One brother meeting. So we're all set? We need, we need to go.
The dates, right?
Okay. Um.
You don't have to worry about that on your motion, you can make a motion to set your, set the dates as you just discussed.
Those motions.
Launching assist dates. All those in favor of setting dates is discussed.
Azalea, aye?
Bob, aye.
Okay.
You're aye.
Somber aye.
Didn't give a yump that time.
Yep.
So now that we have set our public hearing dates we need to revisit um, so I need I move that we bring back to the table um, commotion about changing the permit fees for the building permit fees.
What's that which?
Okay, I'm gonna say here, bring that up.
Aye.
Um. So now that we're back to that discussion, I believe where we were is looking at changing some language in the building permit ordinance to clarify what what structures need a permit and those that don't.
Hmm.
Um, we do not need for the town to vote on um.
The fee schedule.
The fee schedule. But we would need to have that language ironed out before we bring it to a public hearing.
Hmm.
So that may mean that we schedule a select board meeting April second, following the public hearing for those town meeting warrant to finalize the building permit ordinance before we bring that to the town on the sixth.
Yeah. Would it be a meeting on or?
I I wouldn't. I'd recommend that you just collectively, right here and now decide what you would like to put in there, and once I have that information, I'll revise the ordinance to reflect that, and then I will email it out to all of you so you have it. I would just, I mean, instead of having to have another meeting to reword it, I, what do you guys feel comfortable with? And I use the Conex box as an example, because it's a fairly large structure, ten by twenty is, you know, that's an eight by twenty, so that's a hundred and sixty square feet.
Why don't we work on it and see if we can get there?
Yep.
Tonight, and then.
And then I can work the words into the.
Okay, so I'll make a motion that we postpone the matter of the fee schedule for building permits. I know I can't have you to give specific date, but to a select board meeting following the public hearings.
Yep.
A, not the, but A, so we're gonna, could we schedule later?
Okay, second.
Wait, yes. I'm tired, I'm confused. Did you clarify whether or not the decision will be made before the public hearing on the ordinance and stuff? Because you can't have the order. We're not there yet, okay, give me a minute.
We're talking about the fee schedule.
We're putting off the fee schedule. You're not. I'm sorry, is that?
Your warrants are not taken care of, come on.
It's just the the specific charges on our updated.
That's what fees have to be and that structure has to be settled, so you could change the building.
The fees do not have to be part of the ordinance.
The structure of the days. Changes that order.
We'll get there when we discuss the ordinance. We're not talking about the ordinance right now.
I know we're not. I'll go with the flow.
The vote is to postpone setting the fees until later, because the fees don't have to be part of the ordinance. I agree. That the fees do not have to be part of the ordinance. However, if you structure the fees. It could potentially change the order. No?
Cause it clearly specifies in the ordinance that the fees are determined by the select board and reviewed from time to time.
We can now share their discussion and swap their vote.
Elliot I.
You're right.
Sombra I. So we are postponing the discussion of fees. To a later. If someone likes to have the motion. Building permit warrants.
I will make a motion that we make changes to our draft of the. Building permit ordinance.
Okay, let's discuss.
I'm gonna read this first sentence too. And it might be pretty easy to fix this. Prior to the construction relocation, placement, expansion and renovation of any structure. The owner or his agent shall obtain a building permit from Buckford's code enforcement officer. You can change that one sentence and change this whole thing in about five seconds. Discuss, I just wanted to put that out there. That's number twelve building permit.
Would you? Well, that up on the screen. The wording. That we were looking at a few minutes ago.
Uh, from Sabathis? Or from? What were we looking at?
I think it was, uh. What was it Bristol?
I'll try to zoom in so you can see it better, you look like a student.
Thank you. So would you? Read that sentence aloud one more time, Cam.
The one from the ordinance? Oh, we got it.
Do we need to change this sentence or? Could we add? A permit is not required for one floor detached accessory structures, if we take that exact sentence and have it here. Or use the word X. Except for the exception, can we just put? Of any permanent instruction?
I don't like the word accessory structures because under the new law, an accessory dwelling unit. Confuses, that's why I keep using the phrase auxiliary building. We would have to put a definition for. Auxiliary structure in here because. It's not in here. So let's.
So if we add a permit is not required for. One. Floor detached auxiliary structures. Provided the floor area does not exceed. Two hundred square feet, if we decide that's the you know that you want and then later in the ordinance, we could find auxiliary.
I'm already on Google, why am I typing? You're like a year younger than.
You're such a boomer, Cam.
A millennial. Is a structure which is on the same parcel property as a principal structure and the use of which is incidental to the use of the principal structure. That's what Google's definition is of an accessory structure.
That's FEMA's.
No, it's from FEMA, there you go. That's accessory, I don't like that, I like auxiliary.
I'm just wondering about this language that we're adding, like, does this mean my neighbor can just like? Slap a bunch of Conexes on his land and fill him up with tools and junk and. Okay, cool.
And that's where I was kind of getting at with the Conex boxes was if you can put up to a one floor. No bigger than two hundred square feet was to stop somebody from putting ten Conex boxes next to each other and not having to get a building permit for any of them.
Perhaps what we need to add in there is not for habitation.
Didn't she was talking?
Perhaps we need to include in there something about. Not for human habitation.
I I mean, I don't mind people actually living out of their Conex boxes if they're keeping a tidy space. I'm just wondering, like, I mean. My grandfather loves his Conex boxes and he loves filling them full of tools. I just don't want to drive by my neighbor's house and see like basically a junkyard. I feel like we have enough of those here. That we have already have to look at, so I'm just. Concerned about that.
That was the definition I was looking for. Means any building within a plot on which a main building stands other than a delimiting wall fence, which is. Anclary, anc- ancillary, I don't. Or subordinate to the main building and which is used in connection with the main building but does not constitute a separate, okay, it's a little wordy, but.
I guess those may follow up questions, like, I mean, can we even deny them their placing of Conex boxes anyways? Gotcha, thank you.
And I don't think we need. That. Language because if somebody puts something up. Where they shouldn't. So what if somebody? Puts. One or several Conex boxes in an area designated. Shoreline. So where where they're not supposed to. Or within. Not following setbacks. What happens, Cam?
You you would have to, I believe in this ordinance, it specifies that anything being. Erected or put together in the shoreline zoning has to follow the shoreline zoning ordinance, which would require.
So even if they don't get a building permit for something. So even if you don't have to get a building permit for your Conex box, you still need to follow shoreline zoning. Property second. So that was about. Just because you don't have to get a building permit for your Conex box doesn't mean you can. This regard. And and the same, you can't.
This ordinance has, it. In here, it talks about. Auxiliary buildings, remember? Nope, it does use the term accessory structures. Says this ordinance shall not be interpreted to prohibit the construction or placement of accessory structures on a dwelling lot. Uh oh, I better plug that in. No, I'm on the new one.
So are you in the definitions?
No, I'm on number ten. Setback requirements, this is this ordinance shall not be interpreted to prohibit the construction or placement of accessory structures on dwelling lot. Access accessory structures constructed or placed on a dwelling lot are subject to all requirements prescribed here, under the exception of the lot size requirement. So it does define it as accessory structures, there's just no definition for what an accessory structure is. So I would recommend that. We define that along with accessory dwelling units, so people don't get confused.
So the accessory structure is different from accessory twelve unit.
Correct.
Accessory structure would be chicken coos.
My garage is accessory structure.
So do you want to keep that language, maybe just red say accessory structure, or do you want to change that to say auxiliary? Structure?
No, let's not break it, it's already in the ordinance. And this defines this one from. Batus or whoever I'm on Bristol. That uses the term accessory structure.
So now we just need to define accessory structure.
I still think.
Right, and we we should add.
I I think so, especially since we're also dealing with the definition of these accessory.
I was thinking, when I we were talking about this, we were talking about the whole shelter logic thing or whatever, like a little. Whatever. A ten by ten shed is a hundred square feet. That's still a good sized shed. It was always, everybody in town thinks that if they build something less than six by six, they don't have to get a building permit for it, which we know that's not true anymore. I don't like the one hundred and sixty square feet or two hundred square feet because I don't want people just putting Conex boxes everywhere without running it through code enforcement. Cause that could really make the town look ugly. So. Just my two cents.
I'm not disagreeing with that. Where does it say they can't do that? I'm I'm just curious.
It doesn't say they can't do it, but they have to take a building permit out because it's a temporary structure as defined by.
If if we give them a large. If we give them something like Bristol does with two hundred feet and they don't have to bring it to code enforcement.
But if somebody wants, if if I want to put. Ten Conex boxes on my property. And I pay building permits, I give the building permits, is there something that says I can? Okay. I just need to facility permits to do it. And setbacks and stuff, right?
There's no setbacks on accessory structures. According to the ordinance, which is funny. No, you do, yes, setbacks, correct, sorry. Now I'm tired. Yes, I was, I'm wrong, I just read you this. Smile.
Yeah, so we don't wanna. Put that in there, so it's anything under.
I think I think two hundred. Is perhaps too large.
Maybe it's, you know, under two hundred. For accessory structure or whatever.
But like, what's the square footage of a chicken coop?
Like something that or ten, whatever, that's. The code wasn't on, so we'll look at it and be like, yeah, okay.
It may not cover, so that five dollar fee is not going to cover the time, but if we average everything together. The person when they build a great big house and take out that permit. If you average the two together, it would cover both, yes.
But there are more smaller structures being built than larger perhaps, so I don't know that that would actually balance itself out. I think maybe we raise the base fee to cover at least a half hour of code enforcement's time.
So if I want to put. I'm just playing down south again.
No, please.
Like a family size tent is like twelve by. Ten, I want to set up a tent in my backyard for the summer. I have to come get it, I mean. According to this, if we if we go less than. And I'm just playing it.
I'm, I don't think that we need to, I like the language of this two hundred square feet thing, but I think that it should be less than two hundred square feet. Um, cause yeah, I agree, a ten, it doesn't seem necessary for even a chicken coop, it doesn't seem necessary for.
Or six by four, my chicken coop, unless you got a gazillion chickens and you're building a chick mansion. You're allotted four chickens.
Hundred square feet is ten by ten. So is that too large?
You can put up a ten, you can.
But a ten by ten shed has interesting. We assess a ten by ten shed, depending on how it's constructed, it it could be thirty, a hundred dollars in value, so.
So what?
Fifty square.
No, accessory structure in place for more than. We don't want to set ourselves up that somebody wants to put up a tent in your yard for a couple of weeks, has to come get. But you're right, a ten by ten shed.
A structure erected for more than nine months of the year or.
He's. Long story short is. Tens, whereas is. Your lawn, which some of the three foot camper or whatever, any kind of camper really is. For up to. Six months, then you have.
Unless it's registered with, if it's registered, you don't have to do, it can sit there forever.
Through the planning work, what it said, where you can't be living in it, it can still be on the property, but you can't be.
That's if it's a registered vehicle, correct. I think so.
How are you?
You have to go check it, it's in the land use regularly.
So a registered vehicle. Right, so yeah, in that case, but.
If it's registered with B and B, we have no. States getting their cut, they don't, at that point, it doesn't mean. We can't assess property tax on a camper if it's registered, even if it sits there for ten years, if they register it every year, they can live in it.
Registered.
You put the tent down there or they live in it and like limiting it to a certain amount of months. But you can find that on these other type of structures.
I think this, the temporary structure thing is is what's getting everybody. Right, so what did I just say? On the building permit application, what did I, would you like experiment? Building permit, prior to construction, relocation, placement, expansion or renovation of any structure, the owner or his agent shall obtain a building permit for. And for Buckford's code enforcement, the 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 thing that catches us is that structure. Because structure is defined as a temporary or permanent structure erected, assembled, I can't remember the exact definition, it's in here. If you put another exception here and say, exception, a building permit is not required for. A structure or an, what do we call it, accessory structure? Provided the floor area does not exceed X, that's a hundred square feet, whatever. Or for temporary structures. That. I didn't mean exactly where to work, that won't be erected for longer than. Six months.
So if somebody builds that, would you shed, who says not, it's just temporary for the summer, when they go back and check in six months and it's still there, then they should.
This is keeping the honest people honest, we're trying not to make it so restrictive that everybody has to take out a building permit every time they put something up. But what what was hiccuping this whole thing is the definition of structure, because it's in state statute. So if you put in here that the exception is that. A temporary structure that will not be erected for longer than six months of the year out of. For a period no longer than six months, because if they take it down, well, then the six month starts over, but I guess you could take it down for one day and then put it back up. Perfect, now temporary structures are exempt. As long as they're not going to be up for more than six months. Of the year. And you've also said that a building permit isn't required. If the structure is, if a one floor. Detached accessory structure, provided the floor area does not exceed. Whatever you decided for a number, a hundred square feet, that's it.
I think a hundred square feet might even be too much, cause like you said, ten by ten structure.
Seven by seven is forty nine square feet, right? Doesn't seem like much, but.
Last one, or should? So.
Random chickens. Ones.
I mean, if you look at the square footage that they say it should be allotted for chickens, a seven by seven doesn't house that many chickens.
Eighty square feet.
Wow, it's like eighty?
Does eighty square feet sound reasonable?
People, sure. Great. Right, I mean, we can go round and round, but I I think ultimately we want to import areas that the town plans to enforce, you know?
Well, and it makes it easier for the code enforcement officer to. Cause I think even with the existing one, there may, there's some confusion and. Like, when is a permit allowed or required and when's it not? Is it above ground pool temporary or is it permanent? Well, you just defined it, if it's there for six months, then it's. But it's clear, anything less than eighty, and then you don't have to.
And the six month thing, we're getting that out, or we're keeping that?
I think the time limit is.
It's important, but.
Mm hmm, yeah.
You'll you'll find people that will argue that a shed that you buy is temporary, because it's not gonna be there forever, well, what's your definition of temporary, you've defined temporary, or you know, it's not gonna be there for more than X.
Mm hmm.
And it helps us temporary.
So. Temporary. Structure, is there any? Size. Restriction to that? Can it be a five hundred square foot temporary structure?
Do you need, if you're having a wedding at your, in your field and you gotta put up one of them big circus tents, do you really need a building permit to have it up for a weekend? I mean, it's about, you know, it could be a thousand square feet.
What if they leave it up for six months?
But not not temporary, it's a. I I just, I'm just wanting to, so if you, because we're saying that a permit is not required for a one floor detached accessory structure.
Under eighty square feet.
Under eighty square feet, but then it's also not for any.
Temporary structures erected for less than six months out of the year.
So you could do as big a structure as you wanted, as long as you take it down after six months.
And that has to be down for six months before you can put it back up?
Yeah.
But we also have, yeah, I mean, are we gonna have definitions in there, or are we breaking it down, commercial, residential, but either on either?
Hmm.
Or is it just?
Well, that's for your fee schedule when you guys get to that. This is just defining when is a building permit required, well, actually, what's the next, building permit applications will be available. For all construction, relocation, placement, expansion, conversion, structure, yeah. So yeah, we just need to change number twelve. Either put in an exception that is outline what. You just said, less than six months out of the year.
Out of the year and structured one for less than eighty square feet.
Do not require a permit.
So what if I bring? A trim. Onto my property for six months.
I mean, putting a sewer, you have to get a building. Right? For some assistance.
I'll go over that and set to assist you. I want to miss.
Yeah, yeah, no, that is all. Still for someone with this, so.
Cause in the definition of accessory structure, something about. Residents or such a name.
Yeah, temporary, not.
What does the accessory part mean again, what was our definition?
Uh, of accessory structure, it it's, it's a, it's a structure subordinate to the principal structure, so it basically. Subordinate to the main building in which it is used in connection with the main building, but so. It's basically anything other than. The main structure or.
Not used for living.
It's not a dwelling unit, right?
Cause if there were were living purposes, then it would be.
Definitions are mixed, right?
Mm hmm.
Agree.
I'll rewatch real quick. Very, the structure which is on the same parcel property is a principal structure and the use of which is incidental to the use of the principal structure.
So. Putting a trailer on my property.
And actually, we have a definition.
I mean, technically, it's.
Isn't it illegal in main streets and I want to bring a trailer, put it on my property for six months? Of all my friends and relations live in it.
Nope, that's a dwelling unit and that is specifically talked about in the ordinance.
I just wanna.
Mm hmm.
That. By definition, that would not fall under the six months out of the year, correct?
And I mean, technically. By law, you can only have so many bedrooms connected to your septic as your septic is rated, right? Right, like.
There's there's required, yeah, for that, for your main dwelling unit, and then when you get into the accessory dwelling unit stuff, there's still sewer and water requirements.
So you get that sewer can.
Yeah.
Okay.
Somebody rolled in a trailer on a house, and even by definition, this ordinance restricts an accessory dwelling unit to seven hundred and fifty square feet. So a trailer is an accessory drill of dwelling, and it's actually a dwelling unit which was is a principal structure, so for that.
And that's all I was, do we have the definition?
Yeah, because we're defining it as an auxiliary, sorry, an accessory, he's um.
As long as it's written correctly, yeah.
Are we still on? I think we might have lost duty.
So we've run past. Correct?
Yeah, you can make a motion to continue.
We're still.
Still.
I'll I'll make a motion that we extend the select board meeting for. The duration it takes us to finish business. That's my motion. Thank you, Peter.
Discussion. There's no, what can the language be if there's no objection? The motion passes. Okay, then we have to. So what we have. Is.
I thought this was gonna be quick.
Right, well, better to get it right than to. Have this come back on across your desk after April sixth, yeah. On. So we are adding. The language. At about the beginning of the ordinance, to say, what have you got written down so far, please, so?
Not the beginning of the ordinance, under number. Twelve, building permit. Do you wanna do it as an exception, like that current exception that's here for the ordinary repairs, so you'd have exception and an exception two?
Sounds good, that seems, yeah.
So.
Two. And it's. Three. Temporary structures.
Did you say nine, I'm sorry.
Well, well, should we say temporary accessory structures?
Sure. Yes, we should.
So perhaps the language should read prior to the construction, relocation, placement, expansion and or renovation of a structure. Change the word any to a. The owner or his agent shall obtain a building permit from Buckfield's code enforcement officer. And then you can have exceptions.
So. That exception that's already there will be exception one. And exception two. Accessory.
Temporary accessory structures.
accessory.
No greater than.
Yeah, no.
When, this isn't the temporary, this is the temporary, temporary is six months or less.
Erected for six months or less out of the year.
One year period, Tom, by the twelve months.
We say out of the calendar year, is that how you would phrase that? Any calendar.
So you can do it for the last six months of this year and the first six months of next year, and that's okay. I think that's okay with me, I just wanna.
I wanted to say six, any six month.
Mm hmm.
Twenty six months out of the twelve. Already prepared.
A rolling twelve months, right, so.
Mm hmm, yeah. Consecutive.
It's not required for.
Yeah, you put it up in January.
The building permit is not required when a temporary accessory structure erected for less than six months out of a rolling twelve month. Period. When, you know.
So basically up for six, down for six, up for six, down for six.
Less than six months out of the year, one twelve month period, so. So then there'll be an exception three too.
Mm hmm, which would be structures. One floor only, under eighty square feet.
And that would also be an accessory.
That would be an accessory structure.
Less than eighty.
Yeah.
So that's your chicken coop.
Structures.
She's letting us know. For anyone that came up with.
One floor, I guess, or.
Accessory structure is less than eighty square feet. Alright.
Or should we say that does not exceed eighty square feet? Or less than eighty one square feet?
It's not a C, they just go through like that. Good catch.
Eighty square feet of floor area.
Mm hmm.
Right?
Mm hmm.
The container.
Right, because you. Floor area, so could you put up a silo?
What's that, one floor structure?
Or one, one floor silo.
It's a really skinny silo, but. Yeah.
It must be eight thirty five.
So. If those are the changes that you've gone with. Um, and did you hit on accessory structure, adding a definition for accessory structure, because I'm gonna use the, if you're okay with it, the FEMA definition.
Okay.
So I'll change that, I'll send you our copy while I work under the warrant.
And again, for anybody who's listening, we will be having a public hearing on this, and it will not be finalized until, correct, until after that public hearing, people.
Mm hmm.
Are able to.
You're not approving the warrant until after your public hearings on the sixth, so.
So anybody who's listening, if you have questions and concerns, please, it's public hearings and let us know.
Mm hmm. And in lieu of attending the public hearing, we are always in teaming away.
Now that we've had discussion. Please, you know the motion?
I did, um.
Maybe we need to amend the motion to say.
I will amend my motion to. Ask the board to make changes to the town of Buckfield, uh, building permit ordinance as discussed.
Look at those.
I'll talk for the presentation.
Good. That's fine.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye, the motion passes. If there is no other new business, we will mention other business. Public comment areas, do we have public comments?
I do have, but I'm kind of what? I'm pretty darn tired, and I don't know if I could explain it. So I'll just give you the brief overview, not ask the question, and and then maybe the specific. So, okay, so. If I'm understanding it correctly. You approve these local revenues. It's two hundred and forty thousand dollars. Uh, of rescue. Revenue, let's say. What happens? Is. Let's see, they were in a three hundred, sort of these. What did I say, two fifty, or is it fifty thousand go to, so I thought that you all were going to. Have a warrant article that directed. That other revenue to the ambulance reserve, but maybe I'm wrong. But if I'm wrong, I would still like you to consider that, because otherwise. Should they make or bring in, should the revenue be more than two hundred and forty? It would just stay in in there and drop to the fund managers, which gets proportionally divided to all of the other departments. And I think if they're working that hard and bring in more than. Than the two hundred and forty revenue, that it should be designated to replace that ambulance that you know you have to replace. So I just wanna make sure I'm understanding with you correctly. Something in their wording, as we're saying, two hundred and forty thousand dollars in revenue, ten, excess revenue of up to two hundred and forty thousand dollars would then go to, we already have a. Fund, I believe.
Mm hmm.
Would be placed in the, what's the name of the fund?
Rescue ambulance reserve.
Into the rescue ambulance reserve fund, this is.
Yeah, and the only, the only small cut guy I had happy that is it's not excess revenue. You bring in revenue, let's say they brought in. A hundred dollars.
So revenue above and beyond?
There we go, because if not, you're only in your budgets. In the local revenue, saying they're gonna use this amount of revenue out of all the revenue they make, when it's not ex- accessory, right, words matter, thank you. You're welcome. Would you explore? Will we get that wording in the warrants?
It's revenue in excess of projected revenue.
I threw up my point, but that's in another word.
There's, there's a few things to, like, I I know what warrant articles need to be here for the budget. I know what, every year we have certain warrant articles, I know which ones to put in for that. I've gotta have the warrant articles for the ordinances. That's a proposed warrant article, is there anything else that any of you want to ask the voters for, because when I draft this, I mean, I'm gonna send you the copies as I do it. You don't wanna get to that, that public hearing, it'd be like. You found a bunch of errors, Cam. You know what I mean, so when we get there, we wanna make sure that we have everything that that we're on, right, so.
So when you have the drafts, we can certainly.
See if I guess something.
Am I correct, I'm making a motion, am I correct that in the past, the warrant simply worded? To similar buyer. Either approve this amount, or we go back to last year.
Yeah.
That happened because there, in the very first year we did referendum voting. There is no. Backup plan, what do you do if you vote and it's rejected, and there was no. Time, cause you'd have to have another warrant. Time, cause you'd have to have another warrant article that says that you would continue to expend the previous year's budget until such time make. New budget was passed. They did that so that you weren't continuously going back. To special town meetings, so it was either a yes or a no. Some people don't like that. So, eh, if, how do you want these, these warrant articles written, do you want them written?
Me as well.
Which, what are you recommending? Here's my concern. Because it sounds like you're saying. Were to say, okay, I'm asking for. A hundred thousand dollars to run into the town office, but if you won't give me a hundred thousand dollars. I'll run the town office on the eighty thousand. There needs to be that people will run it, we're going to, things will need to be cut. And. If that's not in the language, like if you, you know, said to me. I'll do this for a hundred thousand or I'll do it for eighty guys, do it for eighty. Like, how do you, how do you, does it then come back that we decide what to cut?
So, it's clear and evident that you can't run. Any of the departments off of last year's budget. So, if we write the warrant or you approve the warrant articles written in a way that. Do you approve this amount for the budget? And then you have one separate warrant article that says in the event, if any of the preceding warrant articles fail. Basically, do we have permission to use last year's budget until such time? A new budget is approved at town meeting, at a special town meeting. That gives you a number that you know you can operate within until you can bring a new proposal to the town. That's lower than what they voted down. And give them the opportunity to prove it, if you, if you revert back to last year, you're stuck with that. So, I mean, at that point.
Because we could choose. To not go back again, but it would give us the opportunity to go back.
The recommendation would be to continue to, would at least go back to. I'd say if something fails at the, at the town meeting. You have that warrant article to allow us to revert back to last year until such time a new one has, you have another special town meeting. If it fails again at that point, I, you could word it to revert back to the previous year, but at that point, like you just said. You're gonna be cutting, and if that means. I don't even wanna talk about what it's gonna mean if, if we have to revert to some of the stuff, because things are just gonna continue to get worse and. It's either shut things down. Shorten hours.
But either way, so we have some way to fall back. And then. Obviously, anything that fails, we have to go back to public here to, you know, run it again, we just need that. You know.
Need that permission to continue to do business. So, I'll write them. I'll send them to you and you all can get back to me and tell me if I need to revise it again.
Okay.
That's gonna be what I'm working on this year.
I'm confused. Question? Yes, ma'am?
Yes. Are there more articles written? For example. All of public works, is it just gonna say public works? Or summer roads, winter roads, public works, and complex, are all four of those gonna be in one? More article or are they gonna be individually on separate? What's a good question, because if you put them in all four and one warrant article. You're potentially have the rework. All four, because you won't know which one the voters said no to. I'm just saying, I'm confused. Because last year, I believe they were individually. And if you change that up. And put that under one big. Block, no matter. What it is.
So I have some input on that, that I'd like to get out there.
Has question or comment before camera elaborates? I'm jumping for you to know, involve together and if they say no, then we can come back and niche now people explain what they don't want.
So, so we've, we've done this, we've done this both ways in the last two years, we did it where. And Vivian and I had to talk about this today, because the way our accounting is set up. General government is a department, public safety is a department. Um, public works is a department, debt service obviously is a department, but it's all categories into one community. The library, all that stuff is a department. Parks and Rec is its own thing. So. When we break these down, you, you can't run this town office. With just the admin budget, cause then you, you get the municipal center, you got assessing, you got code enforcement, it's all part of one department. I think you all have started moving towards the one, you know. Without it, it consolidating everything into one rule, public safety is public safety. Fire rescue. I mean, there's still gonna be their divisions, like rescue is a division of public safety, fire is a division of public safety. Just like the municipal center is a division of general government. And. When people come into the, to vote, one of the biggest complaints I've heard over the last two to three. Elections is the number of warrant articles. And when you look at the ballots and you're counting ballots, you'll notice once they get to about twenty five and thirty. They just turn the ballot and they don't even vote. Because they get sick of, there, there's too much for them to interpret in that voting booth. I would recommend that the board consider doing what we did two years ago. And general government is general government, and when the, when the question's there on the ballot, it outlines each. Division of that department, so you can see what it is, yes, if they shoot it down, you don't know which one you need to cut, but you know that somewhere in that, in that. Department, you need to find. A reduction. Same with public, you know, somebody could not agree with one of the lines in public safety, but at the end of the day. It's. I'm taking, we've taken enough complaints from voters about the number of warrant articles and. It just doesn't make sense to have sixty four warrant articles when we could do it in thirty two. Is it fair, it's all or nothing?
I, I. I agree with consolidating the warrant. I think it's important that we're transparent. Um, as we are now, that this document is available to everyone, this document is what. We will go through at the. Public hearings. And that if. Someone. If, if the. Community decides to vote down, let's say. Administration. Um, they do, and then we revisit it, and then we ask the community, okay, you voted this down, where were your problems? And that's how we address it. Yes, please.
Just for the public's reference, where will they be able to find this updated budget document, is it going under the budget committee again, or is this updated budget?
The warrant article is literally what gets posted in town and is, uh, it's a. It's a representation of what the, the ballot doesn't include all the information on the warrant, but it's the information, so it's got the notes, so. When you write up the warrant, it's gonna have informational. Aspects of it, like the individual lines, how much. Administration is, how much assessing is, you know, any additional like pickups like public works where we talked about the body for that truck. There'd be a note on that warrant, so it'll, it'll essentially say to see. How does it usually worded? To see if the town will vote to. Appropriate this amount of money for administration. And then any information that's associated with that. And really at your public hearing, that's what you're gonna be using with this as a supplemental, so that you can show them the line, you know, the lines. But, um. This document is what needs to be posted publicly. For the hearing, and this is what needs to be posted before the election. So. They'll be able to find it on the website, they'll be able to find it, um. Posted at Tilton's. Town office. Roll lumber, post office. Um, probably the library, cause I've been putting stuff there since the Buckfield Mall closed. But. It's not drafted yet, so that's kinda why we're in this discussion, cause I'm trying to figure out how. You all want me to go in that direction. Because that reduces the amount, there's more information under that one question. But. It also reduces the cost of the election in total by, we pay twenty five cents a page for every dollar.
Yes.
Under that scenario. That Cameron just described. Would be. Let's say we wanted to create a library reserve to put a generator there. So when we need the power out, if we don't have to go in the middle or the night, no couple. So with the library. Reserve, the suggested proposed budget, whatever the right word is, let's say you wanna put ten thousand in your library. Reserve specifically for generator, would that go? In with the community events and whatever, I don't know what category.
I, I would say that if. If that happens next year. Or if that happens, then we will address where we go.
All that, so the overall general question is, where do the reserves go, do they go into the individual departments or are they a separate form?
If you read a warrant article that says. Asking the town to authorize. The treasurer or the select board to open a reserve account for the purpose of purchasing X Y Z or for a library. The library is still a division, it doesn't mean that, because now we're voting on the community department, that. All that money gets to go to whatever, because it's specific to the library.
So, let, let me use an example. And maybe I'm misunderstanding as well. So if part of. I guess that's revenue. So for addressing, if we want. Let's. Let's say somebody suggests that we add two hundred dollars, not two hundred, two thousand dollars to the budget. To go into the ambulance reserve account. Would that just become part of the public safety budget?
Reserve accounts have nothing to do with the budget.
So if.
If you budgeted in your budget to put money into that specific account, that reserve account was, that reserve account was established. For a specific purpose, you can have multi tiers of reserve accounts. For capital improvement plans, or you know, if you have a capital asset that you're planning to, it's, it's for that. Purpose.
So if we wanted to put ten thousand. Into the, and. We wanted to raise and appropriate ten thousand dollars to put into the ambulance reserve account. That amount of money. Would, would that be a part of the public safety budget, that ten thousand dollars, would that be included in the public safety? Budget, or would that be a separate one? To go put money into.
That's up to you, you, you guys didn't recommend anything in here for capital.
So if and when that day comes, we could decide at that point if we wanted to include it. In that department, or we wanted it to be separate, but because we don't have that in this budget, that's something to mention there.
Well, and, and again, there's, there's different ways to do that, if you do it in the division of that department. So if you're putting it in for rescue and you had a reserve account line in there, that, that was gonna be a reserve appropriation and you were gonna raise in tax for it. Yes, if you're going to ask to take. Ten thousand dollars out of unappropriated surplus, it would be its own warrant article, because you're taking it from unappropriated surplus to go into that account.
And. Will it be a separate warrant article for? Funds. Above the two hundred and forty thousand dollars.
Yes.
That would be a separate.
Yes. I misunderstood you.
So we're having. Discussion without a motion, so I. Will make the motion. That we direct the town manager to. What's the word, write the warrant articles.
Draft the town meeting.
Draft the town name warrant. So, the town will be voting. Departments. Departmental budgets in their entirety. Discuss, am I working my right way, so we all watch? So the vote on administration, public safety.
Yeah, perfectly good. Stand there all day for however long, whatever it takes. You think it takes for somebody to read through those articles. You just come in, give it that skinny bell, and you can have it for how many days, forty five days? And. But the other way. Limits. But I think it's an, you know, a public education issue, so it's.
So all this with the caveat that our intent is to make sure that all information is available and accessible. And transparent as to where at least final numbers come from.
There's another way that this could work too. If, if you do it the way you're making the motion, and the way we've been discussing. And then you have that one warrant article that asks to revert to last year's budgets for those departments until a new budget. When. We go to that special town meeting. There's nothing saying you couldn't then take that departmental budget and break that down onto individual warrant articles, so if one, one. Department as a whole. Public safety failed or admin fails, we could then come and. Separate out the three and vote on them.
Further discussion? Okay, call for vote, the. So I'm glad, the motion passes, thank you, Cameron. And again, this is all. Open for change before. The final vote on the warrant, this takes place. On six. Any other, other business? I don't believe we have a need for any executive session. You made the motion, that would be your chair, though.
He said, are you sure?
Thank you. All in favor?
At nine o'clock. You made the motion to adjourn?
Yes.
Don't leave, I need signatures, please.